Oh yeah, we got people out there. Call to order the special city council meeting on July the 30th. Roll call please.
Councilmember Happy?
Present.
Councilmember Peterson? Councilmember Wallace? Mayor for Tim Andrade? Thank you and welcome, Ms. Andrade. Mayor Welch?
Thank you. At this time, it's the opportunity for our public to speak or address the council on closed session items. So anyone wishing to come forward to speak, please do so.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor Welch. It's difficult to address a closed session not noting, not knowing at all what the potential cases are, whether they pertain, what they pertain to, and relying on rumor of what is going to be before you when you leave here and go into your closed session. And from what I've heard, the subject of your attention is the most recent grand jury report, which amounted to four pages and had some very, very vague references compared to the three grand jury reports that we have seen before. And it seems disproportionate to call two meetings in August during your dark time to address this new little item. This has never happened before, although there were some serious considerations of the previous grand jury reports. And I refer to current Mayor Welch, who addressed the audience in one of the previous reports and called it, and I'm quoting, I'm not using those words for myself, quoting Mayor Welch as having called this grand jury report bullshit. I usually use the term bovine excrement, so I was quoting you there. And then on the last report also, Councilmember Andrade referred to the grand jury as a bunch of incompetence, they didn't know what they were doing. And now suddenly with these four pages, all this attention is directed in a rather egregious fashion to these, to this current item. And I want to encourage you to disagree with the findings. I would like to mention the finding that City Hall employees were addressed by a City Councilmember and dressed down by, bullied by a City Councilmember. And I presume the Councilmember you are aiming for is Councilmember Peterson. Well, he doesn't usually go to the City Hall and roam around the halls and dress down employees. Former and present City Hall employees actually dispute that they have been, have been getting directions from Councilmembers, plural. And then there was a reference to a lawsuit with a rather staggering amount where Don Peterson was personally named as a defendant, but this was actually a compilation of several lawsuits and the one that he was mentioned in, before that lawsuit was concluded, Don Peterson was dismissed from the lawsuit with prejudice, which means he cannot be sued for that again. So I want to commend you for spending all this heat, hot time of the year talking about four pages of some rather vague references. The previous reports had rather detailed references to handshake deals and real estate transaction and reduction of sales taxes and cutting down brush on these Caltrans property, et cetera. There's nothing like this in these four pages, so I commend you for spending all this extra time on these four pages.
John Hagan, City of Banning. I'm here to address the, the grand jury investigation that, I've been here three years and there have been three prior grand jury reports that have come forward, which all have been brushed under the table. This, this fourth one, it seems to be targeting Don Peterson. And it appears that because he's a thorn in some people's side, they're going to take this and take it to the bank. Well, the problem, problem with the investigation that I see is they, they've interviewed about 14, 15 people and the included, most of those interviews are employees that were either not doing their job in the first place and were, were gonna, were gonna get either terminated, given the choice, they could be terminated or move on. They chose to move on. Well, they go and interview them and naturally, if you keep fishing in a contaminated pond, you're only going to get contaminated fish. And the, the problem with, they said they interviewed two, two or three citizens. Well, I'm, I, I know they didn't pick them out of the air, they were directed on what citizens to contact, which is obviously negative again. Since they didn't come to the, any of these city council meetings and address the public as a whole, or pick people out of the audience to ask them what they thought or their opinion. I, I have been coming to council meetings for three years now. The only person, the only person on this council that is up to speed on the issues coming up to the council is Don Peterson. He's the only one that has brought forward and caught major errors in, in plans that were submitted or, or the direction the city is going, and he hasn't got any support from, from the rest of you. And, but he's the only one that gives the information. I have not heard any information out of any other, any other people up there as far as to enlighten the public on what's going on in this city. And now because he's a thorn in somebody's side, they get a, get a grand jury investigation and got somebody's ear on the grand jury to, to do an investigation on him. I think it's a bunch of crap and it's definitely one-sided. And I, I can see what's, what's happening here. I'm amazed at what's going on.
Mayor, council members, staff, David Ellis. I'm here this afternoon to talk about individual councilmembers. First councilmember I'm going to talk about is Councilmember Happy. I like your haircut, David. I'm not going to criticize it this time. David's relatively new in town. He bought a bar, bought a home, struggling kind of to be successful, but he's, he's, he's a diligent businessman, he's working hard and he's giving it a shot. Daniella, you recently graduated college, you're new in town, you are, I would say, trying to work your way up to be successful and you probably will with your college degree. You, you don't own a home, you, you rent. Mayor Welch, I'm not going to get into particulars with you, but we all have access to property profiles and you're a homeowner and you're in a situation where you, you know, I feel you need to still work. And if you dispute what I have to say when my five minutes is up, you're welcome to say what you want. Then there's Councilmember Wallace. Councilmember Wallace is living in Section 8 housing and since she was 46 years old, I understand for the last 10 years, she's been on social security disability. There's four success stories. Now let's look at Don Peterson. Don Peterson owns commercial property downtown. I think you're all aware of that because we're, you all were gracious enough to approve a business for him, but we've got a fire marshal that obviously doesn't like him and has imposed a $40,000 new bill against him in order for his business to, the proprietor that wants to rent his business to, to open, which is absolutely ridiculous. I served many years as a planning commissioner, I never heard of a such thing, but I'm not here to discuss that today. But his commercial buildings are paid for. He owns rental homes, they're paid for. He has other properties locally that are paid for. He runs a business that he's had for 30 years, probably one of the most successful private security businesses in LA County. To this day, he runs it numerous times. When I call him, he'll excuse himself, American Patrol, and he'll answer the phone. He's daily working a business. The man has wisdom and knowledge. The man is a self-made millionaire. Nothing was given to him, he worked for everything. He retired as a police officer. He served our country in Vietnam and received a Purple Heart. Again, the man has wisdom and knowledge. And what I see here is I see what we have on a national level. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I see a majority of a council that is greedy and stupid. And why do I say that? You have an extremely successful individual, probably one of the most successful council people we've ever had in the history of Banning. And you choose to sit here and excuse my expression, pick the fly shit out of the pepper. And it's not right. The man has about one year left. I'd advise you, pick his brain and use some of his success so that your success can come and make us as residents and constituents successful as well. Thank you.
Jerry Whistler, Banning. Well, I'm glad everybody clarified it. They said the grand jury is about you, Don, because when I read it over, it described perfectly a couple of former mayors that we've had that used to do that on a regular basis. I won't mention names, but it was more descriptive of those former mayors than it was of Mr. Peterson. Being it is about Mr. Peterson, I have one question, just real simple one. I understand investigations and you can talk to your attorney, you can talk to police officers, investigations involve both sides of the story. And according to this document, they said they interviewed former city councilmembers, and I know for a fact neither Ed Miller nor I were interviewed. Maybe it's because we have a different side of this story.
Hello, Council Diego Rose, Banning resident, Beaumont and Banning business owner. So I'm, I'm here today just in regards to what we will again assume is a grand jury investigation regarding a councilmember. You know, the way that we operate in general, council, local government, state government, federal government, a lot of what I do at these meetings is attend so that I can learn the process and so that I can get a better understanding of what actually happens versus what I perceive should happen. You know, common sense is no place in government. It's not local, state, or federal. We do things ass backwards and then wonder why we get the results we have. Grand jury investigations are kind of like that and I do have history with that. I filed one against the local hospital and I did so because I was made privy to where taxpayer funds were being diverted. And you can't unring a bell, so when you find out that kind of stuff and you live in that city, you want things done and you want it done right. A lot of times, we're not given adequate information to make decisions with, and that's really what you're hoping comes from, these people that bring all the information to the grand jury in order to initiate it. Because what has to happen is somebody has to take onslaught of information to them and determine whether they want to move forward with taxpayer protection or a criminal investigation. And as they look through all the information that you provide, the group of jurors determine whether or not it's valid for them to spend their time and energies on. Well, if they take these investigations, there's something that warrants it, whether it's just multiple mouths or multiple pages of information that they can work with. So the idea is that they're going to find something out that is an aha moment and we can remedy it. Something gets done, something gets fixed, right? You want that, you want some resolve, but resolve doesn't come from these grand jury reports and investigations, it just doesn't. So what they actually become is nothing more than a spectacle for the public to revel in. And that happened with the hospital and it's happening now because no matter what, we're not resolving anything. And I think most people throughout the city, whether you agree with Don often or not, or whether I agree with you Art or you Dave or any of you, is not an important facet of what we do here. In fact, the best thing we can do is to disagree and we need to disagree on a regular basis. And then we need to sort through why we disagree and come to some conclusions and a cohesive agreement to move forward. But nobody gets to make those decisions to move forward if we don't have the information to move forward. And I have to tell you, Don Peterson is one of the few councilmembers that ever presents questions and concerns because he has done his homework prior to coming to these meetings. He reads through every ounce of literature, sometimes to a point of disgust. I'm like, God, how do you even pick up on this stuff? As we sit here, I'm still amazed that he is the one that spends the time and energy to know what he's talking about on multiple levels. He does do homework almost to a fault. And so it's important that everybody does that, everybody sees that, everybody works together to get to the bottom of what that information means, and then you, as a council, sort through those things with public input from your constituents and we move forward in a progressive manner. But these types of investigations aren't going to do much. They don't have any teeth. It's a witch hunt, it's a spectacle, but it makes all of you look bad for participating in it, for reveling in it. You have other business to tend to. I would hope that you start doing that more often.
Good afternoon, Ellen Carr. I've been a resident of Banning, well, in October, it will be 27 years. And during those 27 years, I have seen this town torn apart from stem to stern. And you know what? It never gets back together again. Right now, there are divisions among us, the fours and the against. It's not how it's supposed to be. You know, I, I've gone over in my head, over and over and over again, you know, what to say. This is not right. Granted, Don can be loud. That's Don. And I've heard the words ruffle feathers. Well, you know, I mean, I've ruffled feathers in my day and all of you up there maybe have ruffled feathers. But you know, to term, I know it's, it's not his name, but bully. You know, something sad is happening because the bully, I put in air quotes, okay, is now being bullied. That's not right. Two wrongs don't make a right. Of all the councilmembers I have seen in 27 years, Don has to be the most prepared. He does, I'll use, I have to keep on using, I sat back and I waited to see what kind of catchphrases. Does his homework. He knows what he's talking about. And some of you have even asked him, well, how do you know that? He reads, he researches. That's what counts. I, I hate seeing Banning being, air quotes again, torn apart. It's, it shouldn't be that way. We're one town, we're one city. And to have, you know, one person who does his homework and now is being, how should we say, punished for it, is not right. You're better than this. We elected you to make Banning better. And I don't know why we have all this hoopla. We've had three other grand jury reports. They've been poo-pooed and pushed under the table, but now all of a sudden, we have this one. And this one is not even about money, abuse of power, you know, having people do things they're not supposed to do. I mean, this is not about that. There are no felonies here, no crimes being committed, just somebody who's outspoken and ruffles feathers. So I'm just asking you, do the right thing. Let's put this thing under the table and let's work together. I mean, if you have a gripe with Don, why don't the five of you meet together with Kevin or, or Doug or somebody and hash it out? Why are we, why are we airing our dirty laundry in public? Does it serve any purpose? No. Does it make Banning better? No. It doesn't. And we're here to make Banning better. Thank you.
I spoke a while back and I believe that you remember me. I wouldn't get my name at the time. My name is Brooke Dahlman, D-A-H-L-M-A-N. I'm telling you this now because I feel a little bit more comfortable, the fact that Mr. Schultz is not here. I want to let you guys know that I have lived in Banning for almost three years. That's it, three years. Politics. I have never voted a day in my life until I moved to Banning. Why? To be honest, I was so bored, there was nothing else to do. Come to find out, what's going on in our city is pretty crazy. The fact that everyone up here is up here for a purpose, right? You guys want to do something for our city. It's not the paycheck, right? You guys are definitely interested in, in what's going on. Colleen, you've lived here all your life, right? You want to do what's best for our city. Going against each other is not a good thing to do because each one of you guys are on the same page. I have personally and honestly met Don Peterson twice. Today was the second time. What I do know is how to read and how to do my homework. I don't care about this, you did what, you have what, you're doing what, that doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is what's going on in our city and it's not a pretty thing. It is very concerning that all this stuff's been going on and all the fingers are being pointed this way. Boom, 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 it's your fault. Why? Because he's letting people know what's going on? Because he wants to do something about it? He's a good man, from what I can see, very good man. You're probably a good man. You're probably a good man. You two are probably brilliant women. Let us know this. He let us know this by saying, this is what Banning should be, so this is what not, it shouldn't be. You know what I mean? I'm going to let it out. We're in the end days. They're going to reap what you sow. So for the benefit of our children that are growing up in the city, which I do have two children, one just graduated from high school in Banning, the other one is at Hoffer. I'll give you all the information you need except for my social. I will let you know, I am legit, I live in Banning. These are what Banning residents are saying because I've spoken to many of them. They're very concerned about what's going on. This is a rat race between you guys and it shouldn't be. This person over here that I spoke about last time and his wife, I'm going to try not to get mad or too personal, but I have been attacked because I have an opinion on Facebook. It's Facebook. Is Trump worried about what's on Facebook about him? No. You don't see Trump going, you said something bad about me on Facebook. No, that's our president, he has a job to do. Where's our city manager today? I don't see him sitting here. I don't see his BSC wife anywhere either. I'm very sorry, but these are the facts. And I call her this, not because of what I've read, but because of what I have endured myself by her personal attacks, sending me emails about my opinion. Okay? Getting a hold of the admin of the Facebook page that I admin as well, telling him that I'm talking bad about her husband, when I never was. The moron post, that was about me. I never called him a moron. When he went through it, figured it out. So I'm just letting you guys know. This is your city manager, he's the one that's making you guys look bad and whatever doings you guys are doing on the down low are making yourselves look bad. So don't do things on the down low anymore. Just work together and stop attacking this man because guess what? You mess the dog enough, it's going to bite back. Thank you.
All right, forgive me, I'm new to the table, so I'm just getting all this as it comes. I'm going to use a lot of heavy sarcasm so to try and keep up. If you've never had a grand jury come out against you, go ahead and raise your hand. Not so fast, Mayor. Slow down. Don't raise your hand too quick. If the worst case scenario is that Mr. Peterson talked down to some city employees, then I think we should all have a grand jury come and investigate us because we've all dealt with the incompetent people that run the city. I'll give you a for instance, because you look like you need an example. Last year, 2018, some, I guess it's April 2018, I decided to get solar on my house, 1,200 square foot house. And you say, well, why would you do that? Our city electrical rates are so good. Mm-hmm, exactly. So after compiling a year of financials and getting everything in order, showing this, the solar guy our bills, he said, you pay this for this house? That's insane. Now I know why you're getting solar. It's not because he's getting rich, it's because you guys were. So we go through the process of getting solar on the house and wouldn't you believe the wonderful people of this city and how competent they are that it only took nine months to do the job? That doesn't sound right because the solar company had the panels up in a month. Nah, that's weird. So go on, so February, we, we get our solar panels up and everything's running good. And so we should get a bill from the
And so we should get a bill from the city, because we're still doing water. Solar panels only do electricity, right? They don't cover water and trash. And wouldn't you know, we didn't get a bill from, for several months. So, we go down to the city in May and say, "Hey, February, we've had our solar panels up, I know we're not paying electricity, can we at least give you guys a check for the water and the trash we're using?" And you know those competent donkeys you have down there? They wouldn't even take our money for that, because we didn't even receive a bill. Yeah, you got some geniuses down there, cream of the crop. Don't worry, I've told them this too. I've told them how special they were, and I'm glad you guys are all hiring Jerry's kids to work for your city and run your departments. So, last month, I get a bill for the first time, and over, let's see, it's seven-thirty now, for seven months, six months, I didn't get a bill from you guys. The incompetence of the city, of what you guys run is insane. If I did my job like this, I wouldn't have a job. I don't think anybody would in the private sector. It's insane. The worst-case scenario is, he talks down to a few incompetent employees. You guys are nuts.
Diane Boggs, City of Banning. I wanna say, from the outside looking in, it looks like retaliation to me. When somebody stands up, does their homework, makes every one of you look bad, because you guys deer in headlights. I'm pretty sure that's why Don Peterson is being attacked, and having this grand jury report about nothing. He is the only one that educates himself enough before they step on this podium to make things move forward. Half of you are like, "What, what was that? I didn't see that, where was that? Was that in the paperwork? Was that on the plans?" Makes you look real bad. He is a stand-up guy. He's honest, and he's a right fighter, and that's what we need for Banning. Because, things that have been going on for the past, I don't know, how long have you been on the, the council, mayor? Fifteen years? No, just anyway. This city has been, drove to the dirt. I would be scared to see what Banning looked like if he was not on this council, and where we would be. That's, I, I, this needs to just be, I, I don't understand why this wasn't swept under the rug, just like the other three grand juries. Because it's him? Because he makes a stink when he sees something wrong? I have so much respect for you, and all you do for us citizens, and I wanna thank you. And hopefully, this bullshit goes away like the rest of them. Thank you.
Mayor Council, John Clark, Banning, California. I got it kinda written out, a little bit of a, little bit of a speech. I rise here today in support of my councilman, Don Peterson. I know Don Peterson to be a man of great integrity, for the rule of law, with great respect for that, and wants to be the best for the citizens of Banning. The grand jury findings in his case are absurd. It's nothing more than an attack on a good man, who has the, has made people angry by standing for what's actually right, for the people of Banning, not just for a good, few good old boys. Three of you on the couns-, three of you council people are relatively new, and what, to what's been going on here, and you have an opportunity to take the side of common sense, and remove yourselves from the side of what's wrong, to the side of what's right, for the people of Banning. Vote against censure. I ask you to support Councilman Peterson. By doing so, you will be seen by the public as the voters, as voters, by the way, as supporting honesty and integrity, and thus be seen as honest people, truly representing the citizens of Banning. Please vote no on censure. Thank you.
My name is Linda Pipinger, I live in Banning. I've lived in the city for forty years. I never remember any grand jury report ever being addressed for anything, so I'm assuming that this will follow through, and nothing will be done about this one either. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, we will end this part of the meeting, and turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and audience. We have one item of closed session. The title is, "Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Two of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9. The facts and circumstances that might result in litigation against the city are the existence of the June 18, 2019 grand jury report, and the conclusions contained in that report that characterize the city's operations and practices." That concludes my announcement. Thank you.
Boy, I could've turned my microphone on. At this time, we'll convene the closed session. Thank you.